And the county board supervisors meeting today, uh, city manager Reynolds also did, and they have no independent data to support that outdoor dining. This is a debate of COVID-19. That's my motion to this council.
Thank you. I'd like to have...
How much more time, Mary, would you like to discuss this? Would you like to discuss this maybe a month from now when your main core merchants are no longer on Third Street? How much longer would you like to discuss it? Seriously, I would, I would love to know how much longer city council would like to discuss it.
I would like to hear from the, uh, city manager prior to making this motion.
Yeah, what, what, thank you, thank you, Leslie. I think what's appropriate right now is to have the city council discuss this and then open it for public comment.
Well, I think it's appropriate to not only discuss this, but to also discuss the entire CIP order, SIP order, excuse me, assault term of life, and everything about it. I, I, I just don't want to limit it to, to that one aspect. While we need to discuss it, maybe decide upon it, but we also need to take a bigger picture and discuss it and decide upon it. There's all these...
Well, does outdoor dining affect anybody? There is no scientific evidence, Mr. Freeman. And as a, and as an incoming, uh, city employee or council member, um, I really would like to know how you feel about this because you are open officer. I want to know how much constituent voted you in for it.
Yeah, Tammy, I don't think, I don't think there's a John St. Tammy. Hold on a second. So, so council member, council member Freeman.
Uh, I think that we need, we need to, we have to have order here. So right now, the council people will be, I mean, kindness to wait until it's time for the public to speak. So right, I believe, uh, Councilman Freeman is speaking.
Our turn.
So as a, as a fellow council member, I have a clarification to make with my fellow council member, John Freeman. Councilmember Freeman, are you saying that you don't think that, uh, are you saying that my motion that focuses on outdoor dining only is too narrow, that we should instead be broadening that? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'd like to include the other items and, and then consider the whole thing. I, I think we need to consider it as a whole, not as, not piecemeal.
Okay, councilmember Freeman, I thank you for that clarification, and I would point you towards the words of my motion, which I knew, uh, city manager, I already do earlier, where I said that I wish that San Juan Batista would return to, uh, red tier restrictions.
San Juan's doing the same thing, or?
Hey, Colin, turn off the mic. Colin.
Sorry.
That I would, I would refer, uh, that I, in my motion, I asked that San Juan Batista would return to, uh, red tier restrictions. So that would encompass more than just outdoor dining, but everything that was allowable under red tier would be allowable today. Because I have seen no scientific data or evidence that shows that shutting down these businesses warrants these restrictions.
Well, that's broad and speaking generalization. First, I want to, uh, try to respond to Tammy. Tammy, I'm not, I'm not against what Tammy is saying. Okay, so, so, but I am, I, I am, I am saying that, um, um, I, I do think that there is evidence that would show that... I, I just think that's difficult for me, that, 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 no, I, I, I did a Google search. I found some of us, I think, but I wasn't able to see why, so.
Okay, so, Kelly.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to, um, now, you have your, um...
Not that, if I, if I say that, I can do a screen check.
Oh, please.
So try.
My, my, you're out of line, and I want the city manager to speak to us right now, please.
Thank you, ma'am, Mary. Um, my, my goal tonight is to do some of things. What is that?
There's a lot of feedback.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we fixed it, we fixed it. So I just wanted, before we jump... Before we jump, before we jump in...
Before we go mute, yeah.
But, but we need, we need people to get muted.
We'd appreciate that. We've already, we've already spent 10 minutes. That was a good introduction, thank you, Dan. Um, just wanted a real quick, um, recap of what the city has been doing. I have a screen share up there, um, and I'm going to share it again. Bear with us. Um... Um, all right, here we go. Um, I think it's good to put things in context, as Councilmember Freeman just talked about. Um, on March 17th, we declared a state of emergency. In April, we hired the community liaison. We established a business forum tomorrow, this 30th meeting, 30 business forum meetings since March. We helped over 20 businesses receive more than $200,000 in grants, federal, state, county, and local grants. This week, we're beginning to issue $21,000 in, in additional grants to our business owners. We have 16 businesses that will receive checks this week. We have more applications pending, and we will spend up to $43,000 on grants. Uh, very simple, one-page applications and receipts, so please get your information into us. Uh, we started the Third Street transformation in April. We spent $185,000 from our general fund reserve in support of that effort. Uh, we received $50,000 in the CARES Act reimbursement, but we're still spending our general fund reserve to try and keep Third Street alive. We received $63,000 in CDVG funds, federal funds, to help citizens with rent and utility payments. I just wanted to share that with you, just so that we understand that the city has been very busy in the past. Uh, day, hour, week, uh, doing our best to, to, to charter this, this unchartered path, right? Um, it's really great. A friend of mine showed me a resolution from his city from 1918, where they required everyone to wear masks. In the rest of the city, that's where they were in 1918. Are we any different in this position today? So, um, I want to save room for the end of this, this hour to talk about enforcement, because recall that when the CARES Act money became available from the state to the county, that if the county didn't have a good enforcement tool, that the governor wasn't going to allow the, uh, the county to access that CARES Act money. Our county got $6 million, and that's the $43,000 that we're sharing with our businesses now. So enforcement is an important component, uh, and we don't want to lose track of that. And I don't think that opening portlets is necessarily in the face of enforcement, maybe it is, uh, but we think we've been following the, the state's orders. Um, maybe their, their health department, uh, let their health order expire. And in San Juan Batista County, they shut the health order expire. So they have environmental health, they can help them enforce these health orders. That county is out of the program, that's because their attorney has made it public. If they're not going to enforce the law, the county has made it public that they don't want to be part of the Los Angeles grouping. And furthermore, their ICU capacity is over 40% in that county. So it's a completely different... Uh, Tracy Belton reported to the board of supervisors this morning, maybe someone saw that, that we had 0% capacity in our ICU beds. And just, uh, I don't know, I personally have, have a little bit of heartburn, uh, opening anything up when, when the white slip disease is occurring right here in our backyard. So, but I'm here, and I, and I appreciate scheduling this meeting so we can have this lively discussion. I just want to save some room for schools we might have left. So, Mayor, if we could, we could have this discussion for the next half hour, but save a little bit of time for enforcement at the end, that would be great. So, Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. I have these policies from other cities here at my desk, and I'm happy to share them with you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, now, uh, Councilwoman Estha, would you like, do you have anything to say? You have to unmute yourself. You're muted.
I have a lot to say, but, uh, I, I really want to focus on how we can change, or, I mean, breaking the law is not going to make it, you know, or breaking the order that you got coming down, the orders we got from the state. It's going to impact, you know, down the road. So we need to find, there's a way, we need to find a way to settle this, and, you know, maybe they will change it up a little bit, but we exactly say, you don't have the authority to do that, it's for you. So, we need some clarification.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor, uh, Jordan.
Uh, I also need clarification. I've, uh, got spoken about, uh, possibility of funding. Uh, I'd like to hear about that. Uh, I'd like to hear what our city attorney has to say.
Okay. Thank you. And basically, that's my concern, is the, the jeopardizing any kind of funding that we may have down the road. Uh, and it is a state mandate, and we do have to follow it. And, uh, if there's anything, any, anything that we can do to get around it, I'm fine with it. But the, the way I look at it right now, there's nothing we can do. So, um, I'm, I'm sorry, but I have to say, um, I'm not for this, uh, this motion that, that you have made, Councilmember Freeman. Uh, I'd like to hear from our attorney, Deborah Mall.
Um, yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, so I've looked into what other cities have done when they've tried to, um, keep their restaurants open despite being put into the tiers where they're required to close their outside restaurants. And we don't really have a lot of options. Um, you know, the first is that counties have acted, and they've overruled the authority of the state governor to impose these actions. And that was what, that we need a county try to do today, is to, um, do a motion that several other counties have done to, um, basically have the health, the health authority, um, set the rules. And they voted no on that motion, so that got off the table. So there have been some cities that have declared sanctuary cities, and I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what that would do, and that would really keep enforcing the law. And, um, Castle Roles, um, and Solmay are two cities that have, um, said that they're not going to enforce. You send the police out to, um, close down the restaurants that are operating outside of the governor's ban. And the only problem with that is that in San Juan Batista, you know, we hire the sheriff. And so it's, um, it'd be difficult to tell the sheriff to enforce in one place and not enforce in another. And as far as I know, that they're not enforcing right now. But if they were to do that, it would be difficult for the city to say that, I suppose you could. But that'd be the one group that would be available to you. Um, I would caution that, um, there's some case law out there, that if you tell the police not to enforce, and someone gets hurt, you know, someone says they get COVID from, um, eating outside, then there's a possibility there's more liability on the state. And the governor's also said in response to these other cities that have enacted these, um, Castle Roles have enacted these, um, ban on the police enforcing. Um, the governor has said that he was going to cut funds to those cities. So, um, you know, that, those would be the two things that would be liabilities of my mind, are that the city couldn't get, either to a lawsuit, or the city could lose funds. So I think the only real option available is if you wanted to do this, is to actually just tell the police not to enforce. That's really all you have available to you.
But Deb, Deb, I think your, I think the mayor's question to you was, will we lose funding from the state of California if we proceed?
So the governor said when he enforced this a few days ago, he said that he was going to, uh, chop funding to jurisdictions that are not following his mandate. I don't know if that's going to tail up, if that's actually true, but the governor did say that.
In your opinion, is it constitutional for the governor of California to chop funding, as you say, to the city? That, to children's, that his mandates are unconstitutional?
So I don't know if constitutionality comes into it. I guess we got to sue the, suit the state. And I know that LA County, there's some, you know, some cities in LA County have sued the state to try to get out of this mandate. Um, you know, I don't know if at San Juan Batista, that we really have the resources to, you know, file a constitutional action against the state of California.
Do you think that if we ignored the, or, 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 uh, path, that we would be returning from the state of California?
I don't know. We'd have to speak to Castle Roles and Solmay and see what's going on there. I don't know if the state would actually go after us.
I would submit that the, uh, city of Castle Roles and the city of Solmay are much more higher value targets than us. They're not going to come after us. And it's not just us, it's the entire state of California that is rebuffing and rejecting these mandates.
I, I just don't feel that we need, we should risk anything like that. I mean, we don't want to take a risk. And if we want to move into this earlier, we can, but, um, at this point, I think we need to not do it.
That's easy, that's easy, that's easy for you to say, Mary, but you are not Tammy Garcha.
I know that.
You're, you don't own a business on Third Street.
I know that, Deb. You don't want to argue with me. I know. Don't argue with me. You're arguing.
I, I'll argue with you as long as I want to. That's what, that's what the democratic process is about. And I'm telling you that these people do not feel the same way that you do. And I will welcome them to say that on public comment. I'm a city, city council member for at least another 20 minutes, until Scott Thrills takes my place. I think Scott may be on call two, and maybe he can say something. But I'm telling you that our merchants, our business owners, our friends, our people that we love, and they're suffering, they're suffering. And it's not based on any science or any data at all. And it's wrong for you to say that we're just going to go along with Gavin Newsom says. Look what Gavin Newsom says. Really? Gavin Newsom, who goes to French Laundry and has dinner with his friends. He's going to tell us that our business merchants need to suffer these kinds of losses that are going to hit all the world to death. I, for one, am not going to stand by as a city council member, while I'm on this council and applied by that, not even for a second.
It's your choice, Deb. Move to the Hall Street Council. So we have a motion that...
I'm, I'm going to say...
...in that debris has made. So we need to go on with that, because we've got another meeting that we have to have. So, um, that's going ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Now, I would...
I'd like to amend the motion.
I'll accept the amendment. Well, if I can be hearing it, I'll accept the amendment, like, like, just like...
So, uh, my, my amendment would be that we work with the city of Hollister to, uh, and, and enact stricter mask enforcement, particularly against, uh, certain bars, and, and, and in lieu, we would also let apartments be open and serve outside access. So that, that, that's kind of my, um, I had a sense of conversation with two city councilman people from Hollister right there, if they're a little more like this.
Hey, is there a second?
Discussion on the camera, first.
A discussion on the amendment, if you want to discuss it again.
I second, I, I second my motion, hasn't it?
Uh, there's, there is some public comment.
Okay.
On the, uh, on a group chat, uh, Jackie Morris Lopez says, uh, and Jackie, if you want to read it, chime in, or if you have something to say. Uh, Jackie says, I hear the risk assessment being presented, that's funny, what about something out there? Who is referring to what people? Maybe he needs to recognize the rest of the community, not just his friends. I see where this is going, unfortunate what happened to public comments on this. Uh, somebody from an iPad says, what about the ones that maybe losing? And, uh, the lawyer sent us, obviously, Hollister, uh, city councilmen, uh, would like to comment.
So, so Leslie, can you, can you say it? We should open this, or, back there, can we open this up to public comment? Because I don't think we have a, uh...
Uh, yeah, we, we, like, we can, right, Deborah?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, uh, uh, Councilwoman Resendez from Hollister, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mary, and, uh, San Juan Batista City Councilman and women for having me here tonight and allowing me the time to speak with you. Um, this issue in particular is, uh, something that's very concerning to me. I've been following what's going on with the, what's going on in the county level and what's going on within your city. I have had some conversations with some of the council members, from San Juan Batista, and I think the general consensus is, at some point, we did not feel as supported by the county as far as having enforcement done. And the conversations that I had with, uh, the council people in San Juan Batista essentially is for us to look at passing an ordinance that's going to allow us to have a little bit more enforcement abilities than what, uh, what we have now. Um, I'm very troubled to hear not only the tone, but the disregard and disrespect for public health. And, um, do you think...
Of course, you would say that. You know why you need to mute yourself, Tammy?
She did.
I understand that this is a very passionate issue, but I think it was made very clear...
I'm very sorry, I thought I was muted, but of course, Mr. Wolf... Has somebody muted her?
She is.
Thank you, Mary. Um, I think what happened at the county chambers today was very clear that the direction we went in, that we went ahead in, especially being another death today and 61 more people that were infected with COVID. Whereas Tuesday, we had three deaths this week. We had over 200 or close to 200 people infected. We're living in a very scary time, and I think we need to put the public's health and well-being at the forefront of our decision-making. So I would just ask that you take that into consideration. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Jackie Morris Lopez has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Jackie. Jackie, without hearing you.
She muted.
Or she just unmuted herself.
Turn, turn, turn.
Vernon, has her hand up? If we can go a little bit of Fran and maybe come back to Jackie.
Okay, that sounds good. Go ahead, Fran. Hi, everyone. Um, certainly wasn't expecting, uh, all of this tonight. Uh, you know, speaking as, as a business who's been shut down since March, um, and just limited to, to doing, to go, you know, you'll find that 99.9% of the businesses in San Juan Batista, we all, we all committed to doing the right thing, and we all, um, you know, stood by our county and our state and really tried to get through this. And, and we all have been creative, and we all have tried our things, and we all have supported each other. But I have to tell you, the emotion and the frustration that you're seeing now all comes from the fact that we really didn't enforce these restrictions, and we saw a lot of things happening throughout our county, and it really was, uh, heartbreaking for a lot of us. And so that's, that's a bulk of the emotion, at least for me. It was just really disappointing, um, after all these wins and all these sacrifices and leaving and everything. And, 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 um, I have taken this pandemic very seriously from being our business house. And again, the, the fact that there was no enforcement was so frustrating for us, and I think that's where the emotions is. So, so when you think about it, like, today, uh, today is my husband's birthday, and I'm in Santa Cruz, and we are enjoying outdoor dining here, and we're just a few miles away. And so, you know, for me personally, I just don't see why we can't have outdoor dining. That was the one lifeline that we had as a business. And I just want you guys to consider that. When we get through this sheltered place, I would really appreciate our city to just consider, consider allowing outdoor dining. Uh, your businesses that are in San Juan Batista, especially the hospitality, they are behind you. And I can tell you that unless our city tells us we can do something, we're not going to do it. A lot of us won't. We believe in our city. And, 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 and that's, that's a huge responsibility on your shareholders, all of you serving. Huge responsibility that we believe in, you know, and we will follow what you tell us. So, that being said, please think about it. When we get out of this sheltered place, think about what we need, because it is getting very, very dark out here. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we hope for your approval. So, I'm sorry. Um, who else? Is Janet Peck on?
Debbie had to, um, call in, she's had her issues.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, Candy would like to put in her two cents.
She already has.
I think she's just in it.
And we need her to put her two cents up.
That's right, she, uh, she needs to be on your... That was her, the chap, she needs to be on your agenda.
Tammy, you're unmuted, Tammy.
Okay, well, obviously can't see me, so that's okay. Um, thank you, Ms. Mary, for allowing me to give my two cents. Um, so as a member of this community, um, as I don't live necessarily in San Juan Batista, I do have a business in San Juan Batista that's been there for 38 years. However, um, that being said, um, I do think that, uh, majority of my, of my people sitting on our council do not realize what it takes to run a business. And I am absolutely not asking any of you to come down and give me the business. However, what I am asking you is this, is to allow us to do outdoor dining. There is no scientific evidence whatsoever that says outdoor dining is the cause of COVID-19. So explain to me this, as I said to Officer Graham yesterday, as I was clearing out all of my restaurants and as my dad came in. And yeah, it's a little emotional for me, so go ahead, take a seat back, think about this, including my district mayor, all the things that John Esters has done for our... Now, that being said, I want you to give me evidence. Now, that being said, I want you to give me evidence stating how outdoor dining is the cause of COVID-19. How does it make any sense, ladies and gentlemen, for anybody to come, grab something to go, go sit on a bench, sit butt to butt, cheeky cheek, next to somebody, take something to go from Dona Stares, something to go from Ardenas. And they're sitting right next to each other both, and yet, that that's okay. But it is not okay to come into Dona Stares, in Naca, and in Ardenas, or Lomas, or whatever. Six feet apart and have something to eat. Makes absolutely zero sense to me. There is not one person on this ward right now that can give me any evidence whatsoever. That said, this is the cause of COVID-19. The hospitality industry is taking a feeding boat. You know as well as I know that San Juan rides on its tourism. We are about our mission. When we forget about that, then we need to close our doors. So let's make sure that we all realize this once and for all. We are about our mission. So we need to allow for everybody to have a complete certainty. But when everybody comes into Don, when everybody comes into Naca, Dona Stares, I'm sorry. When people come to San Juan Batista and they want to go to the mission, they're not just coming to the mission. They want to have the overall experience, which is a dining experience, which is going to the shops, shopping at all the shops. Most of us who have been in this community for over twenty years, we know for a fact that this is what it is all about. We are about, we are about the overall experience, ladies and gentlemen. We do not offer somewhere for them to dine. We do not offer them, uh, possibly the prerogative whether to dine outside or take it to go. You know what? All you're doing is hurting us. That is all you're doing. Our tax, where are you? That's the city get from Dona Stares.
No, your three minutes are up. Okay, Jackie. Okay, so who else? Who else?
Jackie Morris Lopez is like, uh, back online.
She's ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Jackie. But she's probably still having problems.
Um, it looks like she's unmuted and she's going to call in.
She is unmuted. Oh, now she's muted again. Is there anybody else?
If Tanny rejoins, if she rejoins then.
No, she's had her three minutes.
And say, no, no.
Hello, this is Anthony and we got a meeting, girl.
Hi, Anthony, go ahead.
Well, I normally have three minutes, so I'll be short on this. Um, in fact, there's a very, very, I expected everybody to bring their five entirely not as a, um, if we're here. This, you know, I agree one hundred percent, uh, we can be outside and separate, we're very strict. Uh, we're necessary, uh, present, atmosphere, we're off on how we have everybody, how we're established. So I don't understand, we don't understand how these people make us, especially when you walk into mall, you walk into Costco, you walk in the same way. You walk into, uh, a Winnebago market, it doesn't matter.
It's successful.
Their purpose is for the party, you know?
Well, we're supposed to.
We understand the severity of COVID-19, we really do. But we want you guys to go to a council meeting, how does that affect us as businesses? We're very off and happy. My, now, of us respecting the six-foot laws for your career, no way, no way to affect anybody who looks up to go ahead and come out. And for example, we have served food or not, because of COVID, but, but no. We're standing wonderful, but part of the reason we're standing, when you're not sponsored, you're not getting, we, 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 all we, all we. So all we have. Go ahead and open back up, whether it be purple or red, let's open this back up so we can go ahead and stay alive. That's all, yes.
And you keep that, anyone else, um, listen?
Uh, yes, uh, and I just would like to know if you have three minutes?
That's all. Give me three, 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 three. Uh, that's okay, because it seems to me as though this very, I don't want to give you my three. Or anybody else is three. First, okay, I'm very totally okay. Go ahead, it's to you, Ms. Mary. But remember this, this is that, thirty-eight years for Dona Stares, forty-something years for Ardenas. I am so, so expecting better from my council, much better.
Uh, six, seven, three, two, two, six, nine, is there a hand raise? Can you please state the name? Uh, okay, Jackie is ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Okay, this is Jackie on the phone call. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Hi, um, I'm so sorry, very emotional in a period of five, six, seven. Um, I don't know season, but I do support local businesses. I've been a life one resident here in San Juan Batista. I just want to remind people that we are a little bit local in the Dallas. Now, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen, but also a professional healthcare provider. I'm a standard-trained physician assistant. I currently work in primary care, family medicine. I, I hear that these people are saying, I notice a lot of heartaches and a lot of, um, I'm sorry, deep. And yes, we're taking a serious financial debt. But you have to realize that right now, you have people dying around the community. As I was listening to this meeting, there was an update, another person died, who were involved here tonight, um, as Councilman, um, Roland said. I feel that we may one week, okay? Remember, the governor said for three weeks, day at home, close restaurants, and personal salon, hair salon, paid lately, but the restaurants are actually doing something that was good. If people left, they should, they have the option, they should take out, um, curbside and more than half, or more than more, it's not a long deal. And I understand Tammy saying that it is an experience with San Juan, but right now, that experience is really turned upside down. We're in the middle of a serious pandemic and we have two more weeks left to this order, or we mandate. We can hang on, the vaccine is here. When you think about other people in our community, not just their dreams. We have, we're a community of a lot of healthy people. And yes, I don't agree with the big, big box store theme of them. I think it's kind of ridiculous. Um, I feel like Winnebago market, I feel like they need to be able to coach and run out toward my ideas with the staff that we have. The city, like, maybe those dreamers on, or the code for search and talk to them. I think they need to make an impact with store owners, restaurant owners. I can still, those are people who are going to listen, because if you have a twenty-year-old clerk at Winnebago or a waitress at Dona Stares, or Ardenas, or whoever, they're less likely to be really being all successful and probably in the community. And I think that we need to work out this meeting together, because if we can survive this, we have, we're down to two weeks now, okay? Two, two days is a second week. And because these numbers down, people get vaccinated, they're going to take care of each other, we can start with one, the other side. If sacrificed only two minutes, I really wish I'm employed, I've known two days a week. Uh, so everyone takes it, we just have the work together. And I do not want to, let's go back to the business video. We have twenty, twenty-one right around the corner, we have the vaccine, thank you, Nigel, thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Uh, I, I don't see, I don't see any other hand raised?
Okay.
Or any other comments?
Uh, it is.
Wait, wait, there's, I'm sorry, there is another comment, um, I, uh, there's so much disrespect being shown tonight, starting with Dan, which opened it for the others to follow. It's very difficult to accomplish anything positive when there's the leading hand, the explanation being shown. I think I don't know what that is.
Okay, all right. Um, we have, we have less than fifteen minutes for our next meeting. So, um, uh, our city attorney, where, where should we go from here?
Well, I think first you should go to this motion and then afterwards, um, the city manager and I want to resolve or reserve even if to talk about, uh, enforcement.
Okay, so, um, Councilman DeVries, what was that?
I, I just have to ask one more question at my night.
All right.
Um, this is to the city attorney. Um, it talked about, uh, uh, dining, outdoor dining, is that a family or a setting of friends?
No, we're.
I think it concerns, I think what concerns is about the group of friends. I think that's, that's what they're, what the, I read the governors concerned about.
Very well, okay. Okay. Okay, so, um, we have, uh, a motion by, uh, Councilman DeVries and a second by, uh, Councilman Freeman.
We have an amendment by Councilman.
An amendment to the, to his, uh, motion. So, um, should, uh, we can take the vote, uh?
Do we have a second?
Oh.
I just have to give a second.
Do we have a second? Clearly do, it made the motion, I mean, of, of, of.
I have anything in front of me in writing, so I don't, you know, I really don't know.
Not that you can hear me.
We have to do it.
No, I'm not going to do anything that is not in writing. I don't have anything in front of me, so I'm going to have it back, Deborah.
Need a second, uh?
Right, that's, um, so my understanding is, it's a little bit odd, but so Dan made a motion, Councilmember Freeman made a friendly amendment, Dan accepted that friendly amendment. So I think Dan's motion, as amended, still needs a second, which Councilman Freeman can do. I just don't think it's been harmonized.
No, we need a second. Another second.
I second, I second Councilman Freeman's, uh, friendly amendment.
So I, I think it's the other way around. I think he needs to second the, your motion as, as amended.
Your book.
Okay, roll call vote. We have Councilmember Flores. Cesar?
No.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember DeVries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
No.
Mayor Edge?
No.
The motion is stated by the maker, is, is denied, does not pass, uh, two to three.
So I need to say something right now.
Go ahead.
You all, three to two. All right, let's, let's, let's mark the time, let's mark the place, let's mark the names. Those in favor of opening outdoor dining in San Juan Batista were John and Dan. Those against were Mary and Leslie and Cesar. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Great. Well, then the city of San Juan Batista can hold you accountable for your decision that you made tonight. And the vaccine is coming, the vaccine is already here. And so the decision that you just made, I will have you know, is to deprive these business owners on Thursday from tens of thousands of dollars that they get to ride, outdoor dining, between now and April and March, when the vaccine is here and a pandemic is behind us. You just told them, no, we don't want you to have that money. We don't want you to have that money. Because we know better. I for one do not know better. I think they deserve that money. I don't think there was any science or data whatsoever to support your decision whatsoever. And I'm very upset by it.
Can we now get to our city attorney, our city councilor?
I just wanted to add that, just to, you know, what Dan said is, I mean, the governor is the woman who opposed this order. And today, the county did not, voted not to have the health official change the order. So I don't really feel like it was these three individuals that said you can't eat in outdoor facilities. It wasn't the state and the county that have said that. So just being on their behalf, I just feel like that needs to be stated.
Can I, can I, can I comment on that, Deb?
You know what, we're running on a time down and I.
No, 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 Deborah.
Your emotion, everything.
I, I get it. My emotion fell, I get it. Deborah, were you on the, uh, County Supervisor, Supervisor's call today?
No.
I was, I was. And Supervisor Patello asked Supervisor, or maybe to make a couple of changes to it. He wasn't prepared to do that for reasons that are known to him, I don't know. He should have made the changes, in my opinion. But that was not an object rejection of a better idea for San Juan County. It was not at all. And the way that you just pulled that out is a misinterpretation of what San Juan County thinks of our COVID response.
Okay, so let's go on, um.
So, um, in, in, in researching enforcement, the state has formed an enforcement task force which cannot be found on their website. Enforcement of these roles is supposed to be left to the, uh, the Labor Department, Caloosa, ABC, and other state agencies. Um, if the county had re-initiated a health order, we'd have environmental help to help us. Um, so Deb and I have been looking at several different cities, including Nevada City, um, and we looked at Salome and Paso Robles. Um, and, and Deb has been working on this for at least the last ten days in efforts to bring this forward. But it kind of got usurped by the, uh, the Parkland conversation. So Deb, do you want to share, uh, there are other options, uh, the unfair business practice, both civil and penal, uh, codes that could be enforced possibly and some other things?
Well, I think the idea, we, we can have a special meeting this week to, um, to basically rev up our enforcement. And, um, we could have an ordinance that we can pass as emergency ordinance to, um, enforce mask wearing, um, to enforce the governor's order, um, and to enforce it through our administrative process. So if we go into enforcement, Hollister, in a criminal matter, that we could, um, issue administrative citations and break the proceeds into San Juan Batista. So I will, um, bring something, I, I, I started up, I started working on this and then I was. So I will break something, I, I, I started, I started working on this and then I was kind of waylaid because it's cross purposes, but keeping the businesses, you know, open and defying the order. But I'll come back to you, especially this week, and we'll vote on an emergency ordinance if that is the rule of the council.
That sounds good. Yes. Thank you. So now we can go on to, uh, approving the affidavit of posting. Okay, thank you. All right, roll call vote.
Do you second?
Yes, that's our second.
Didn't you second it?
That's our second, that's the first, yeah.
Councilman Flores.
I thought it was the most, or whatever.
Okay, roll call vote now. Councilmember Flores.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember DeVries.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan. Mayor Edge.
Yes.
The motion passes four to one with Councilmembers DeVries voting against.
Okay, thank you. So, uh.
Wait, hold on, hold on, man. Can I get the roll call motion, uh, back there?
The, we just went through the roll call and, um, all were in favor of approving the affidavit of posting. And, uh, Councilmember DeVries voted against.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Change your vote?
That, 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 that's why I asked for the case, I'm sorry. So after, after, after the end of posting, I might change my vote to yes.
All right. The, then the vote is unanimous. We've got saturated. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so now, um, we will adjourn and we have two minutes to, into our next meeting. Thank you, everybody.